Got two minutes, Lynn.
Okay, well, my clock says 10:02, but I'll watch for.
It's 9:58.
Yeah.
It's live.
Okay, well, let me go ahead and I'll call the meeting to order of the quarterly board meeting of the Kentucky Retirement System. And we're going to go slow right now because my clock seems to be faster than the office clock. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Sheri, if you don't mind, or I guess this is actually Michael, if you can read the legal public statement?
Yes, ma'am. This is a regular meeting of the Kentucky Retirement Systems Board of Trustees. This meeting is being broadcast via video teleconference pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute, Section 61.826. It may be viewed by the public at the Kentucky Public Pensions Authority office located at 1260 Louisville Road in Frankfurt, Kentucky. It is also being broadcast to the public via Facebook. If you are speaking and are not appearing by video, please identify yourself before talking. In the event the video or audio broadcast is interrupted, we will attempt to reestablish a connection. If a connection cannot be reestablished within 30 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to another date. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Do you all have 10 o'clock in the office now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Okay, Sheri, if you would do roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Otkins? Ms. Boba?
Here.
Ms. Eves?
Here.
Mr. Lane?
Here.
Dr. Miller? Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Mr. Summers?
Here.
And Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you all. And Sheri, do we have any public comments?
Yes, ma'am, we have one public comment. And I will read that now. This comes from Douglas Lee Jordan, and he writes as follows. I want to see the pension spike problem fixed. This is totally unacceptable and ridiculous. Also, the two-tier the two-tier one systems insurance for the family needs added back immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. And as usual, you all will reply to the gentleman. Okay, next, we have the approval of the minutes of April 9th as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion is accepted. Thank you very much. Okay, the next is Dave, you are on board to introduce Ryan Barrow to the KRS Board.
Thank you. Well, sitting to my right, and I guess if you look at the opposite, is Ryan Barrow. He joins us first day was yesterday, so he's got a day and a quarter in already. And we have a program set where he's meeting with quite a wide variety of different managers. I think today he's got a complete full schedule and will have for quite some time. As you know, I'm supposed to be shadowing him. I shouldn't say supposed to be. I am shadowing him for until July 31st. But we're keeping it busy, and I think he's going to be he came in with a good experience in the state government. He's been involved in investments. He's by the time we get to July 31st, he's going to be on top of his game. So Ryan, you want to?
Sure. Very glad to be here. As Dave said, I've been exceedingly busy. Enjoyed it so far in the day and a few hours. I conclude a good father's day. And the first weekend in 20 years, I didn't have access to work email. So that was exciting, but very glad to be here. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to commend the search committee again for the rigor that they went through. We had candidates from coast to coast. We had really good number of well-qualified candidates. I think it was quite a hard task to come up with V1, but we came up with the one. So thank you for being here, Ryan.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Ryan. I know you're coming in with knowledge of our organization and knowledge of the state. That's something very important. We also know you're going to be drinking from a fire hose for a while. And I hope it's at least lemonade or something, you know, so that you've got the flavor to it. And then in particular, and Ryan, I'm sure you agree with this, that Dave, thank you for staying on so that you can maybe hold the hose or do something like that to make it easier for Ryan. So welcome, Ryan, and thank you, Dave. And we'll talk later on, on thank you for all you've done.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we have the Michael Lamb and Ryan Graham. You are on board for the audit planning letter.
Good morning. Sheri, can you tell Ryan Graham?
Are you? He's here.
Great, let me introduce him. Ryan Graham for Blue Company is the external audit firm that we've engaged to do the act for audits, one for the KRS and one for the CRS. This is a required communication per auditing standards to the governing body of KRS. And I will turn it over to Ryan.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having us today. In front of you on the screen is the just standard planning communication letter. The primary purpose of this is just to establish a two-way dialogue, introduce myself to you all. My phone number and email are in this letter. If you ever have a need to contact me, please feel free to do so. We have had one planning meeting with KPPA staff just to get our feet wet again and talk about some general planning. And we'll be kicking off the audit in the coming months and look forward to getting started. That's the primary purpose of this, is just to reintroduce ourselves and please reach out to us with any questions or concerns. You may hear from members of our team throughout the audit process. But that's that was the primary purpose for today.
Thank you, Ryan. Are there any questions for Ryan? This Ryan?
I'm quite used to not being the only Ryan. I'm not sure if you have that similar experience, Ryan Barrow, or not.
Yes.
So any questions? I've got one, and that is, I think this is the first time Blue has followed the Kentucky State Auditor into and doing the before and after and doing the audit. And I will say personally that I thought the state audit, that they did a good job and stayed in contact. And hopefully you were able to find it easy to follow.
Good, thank you. That is one of our next steps, is to get in contact with them and obtain their work papers. And we generally have a good working relationship with them when we transition back and forth.
That sounds great. Okay, if no other questions, we'll go on to number seven, which is also Michael, or Mike.
Yes, thank you. This here is a memo asking the KRS Board of Trustees to approve their own internal hybrid allocation for the KERS non-hazardous plan, the KERS hazardous plan, and the state police retirement system. As you are aware, there's a budget work group that evaluates costs and determines how to allocate KPPA costs among all the systems and plans that KPP administers. And on July, on June 27th, the KPPA board will be presented with the hybrid percentage for CERS at 64.16% and 35.84% for KRS. But that board allows the individual boards of trustees of those systems to allocate internally. And so we've done that based on membership for the past several years. That is the proposal in front of you today is to allocate the KRS hybrid percentage of 35.84% among the three systems based on headcount as presented. And so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to elaborate on that. Otherwise, I would seek your approval for those percentages.
Does anybody have any questions? Mike, I have a hopefully an easy, very easy question for you. Was the participants from KRS in the budget process, I think were Pruitt, was it Pruitt and Keith? Or Pruitt and William?
Just Pruitt and John Chilton. Pruitt was the only trustee on that work group right now.
Okay, Pruitt and John Chilton. Okay, well, then to Pruitt and John Chilton, thank you all for your time and putting all this together.
I will add that the real thanks should go to Mike and to Bill, who did yeoman duty on this. Basically, I had the privilege of nodding my head.
That's a good one. Okay, with that, we'll need a motion to approve the 2025 allocation of KRS hybrid percentage between KERS non-hazardous and KER hazardous and the SPRS funds as presented.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Also.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Anybody thought of anything? Is all those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Okay, the motion is adopted. Thank you very much. Not sure if that was somebody wanting to say something. Okay. Okay, the next in the Mike Lamb Show today is the quarterly financial reports.
Yes, thank you. Sheri, we are at the bottom of page 12. And you see the fiduciary net position for Q3 for all three plans is 5.8 billion. That's at the end of March. That's 18.74% higher than the Q3 amount for 2023 of 4.9 billion. That's 1900 and 19, $919 million higher and is driven by a 36.54% increase in total investments at fair value. All asset classes are up except for derivatives from year to year. I'm going to move on to page 13. And near the bottom down there, you can see the increase in the new sharing that position is at 17. It's kind of a to the left share even of one bro right there. 718.6 million compared to 453.7 million in the same period in the prior year. That's $265 million higher and is driven by a slight $44 million overall increase in contributions as well as 226 million or 102% increase in net investment income. We carry that forward down to the next page of page 14. The light yellow line shows that net contributions for the three plans reported positive at 329.9 million, 37.8 million, and 16.5 million respectively. Member contributions for each plan are up. Employer and employer pay credit for all three plans are also up, while the AALC and the General Fund of Operations amounts remain flat although they are large and well-welcome. Total outflows were relatively consistent across all three plans. And then if we remove the net investment income of 80.3 million, 18.6 million, and 13.6 million, we can see in the bottom chart that all three plans have a positive net cash flow for the period. Any question on those pension statements? And then I'll move to the insurance. Sheri, page 15, similar to the pension statements. The fiduciary net position at the end of Q3 for all three plans is nearly 2.6 billion. That's 14.98% higher than the Q3 amount for 2023. That was 2.3 billion. That's $338 million higher and then is also driven by increase in total investments at fair value, which were up 22.72%. If we move on to the statement of changes on page 16, the increase in fiduciary debt position is 263.8 million compared to 143.2 million in the same period. That's 120.5 million dollars higher, driven by a $5.1 million increase in employer contributions, a $4 million increase in human gain share, and 92.9 million or a 68% increase in net investment income. Furthermore, we had $14.5 million less in healthcare premiums and subsidies. If we carry that forward to the contribution report for insurance on page 17, the yellow line will show that the three plans reported net contributions of 78.6 million, 0.2 million, and 2.4 million respectively. If we remove the net investment income of 29.9, 11.2, and 4.7, the K hazardous and the state police plans have negative cash flow for the period, whereas non-K has remains positive at 48.7. Any questions on the financials for either of those systems?
Michael, I'm trying to see the, Mike, I'm trying to see the cause of the negative this month.
I think it's just because we don't have as many employer contributions in those plans. And so it's really just investment income for hazardous and state police. And so when you remove that investment income, you're going to have negative cash flow.
And is that a temporary situation?
No, these insurance systems are mostly fully funded, so you're not going to have contributions coming in because they're not needed from the employer employee.
If I'm not mistaken, these are 100% funded, aren't they, anyway?
I think so, yes.
Three, four out of five.
Yeah.
Yeah, four out of five are over 100% or greater. The one that's not, it's about 80.
Okay.
And it's a smaller one.
Okay.
Perfect. I think I'm on page 18, so this is a listing of outstanding invoices by employer type. The March 34th grant total of 6.9 billion is 17% higher than the December 31 total of 5.9 million. I'm sorry, 6.9 million versus 5.9 million. That increase is due to the AALC. There is one entity that continues not to pay their AALC invoices at 120 a month, so it increases about 363,000 per quarter. The top 10 employers are listed down below. Two of the top 10 have three stars by their names, and that means their invoices have been turned over to legal for further action. Kentucky River Care is all AALC. The rest are a combination of sick leave, health insurance, reimbursement, and pensions.
Keith, does that make you feel good that the police are down to this low?
Well, I think, oh, yes, but I think we were at zero just a couple times ago. So the fact we're at a couple hundred thousand now, I don't like that in particular. But yeah, it's better than 10 million, which I think we were at some point.
Yeah. Any other questions or statements?
This page here shows the penalty invoices that were waived for the quarter. One of them for $1,000 was waived. One penalty, or two penalty invoices were created for a total of $2,000 for the quarter, and two penalty invoices were paid from the prior quarter of $2,580. So this statement also looks very good for the participants when it comes to reporting on time. The next page is the admin budget. And again, what I've done is I put a summary here with some of my comments. I'm going to go through them. And then if you have any questions on any of the line items in the next few pages, you can bring them to my attention. The personnel line item for staffing was spent $26 million, which is 74.9% of the budget, leaving 25% left in the fourth quarter. Within this category, it is likely final salaries and wages in FICA may come in slightly over budget for the year. We've had lower-than-expected turnover over the past nine months as well as various position salary adjustments. This potential will be offset by other line items in the category and should bring the total category right in line with budget at year-end. For legal, the hearing officers line item has exceeded its annual budget as of March by $33,000. This is due to increased pay rate and efforts to clear our backlog on the cases. We have since hired two in-house hearing officers as a strategic measure to improve this process and for our members. So going forward, those hearing officers will be in the salary line items. And we still have the contract for a few hearing officers that will continue into next year. The budget group's been working on those, and I will bring that to the KPPA meeting on Thursday. A little bit of discussion about that on a Thursday. KPPA, KPPA meeting next week. In legal, the Frost Brown title line item has also increased its annual amount by $65,000. That's due to increase in activity related to ongoing cases. However, the other legal line items remain under budget, including SKO, Reinhardt, and Ice Miller, leaving the overall legal category with 430,000 left to spend. And we anticipate this overall subcategory remaining under budget for the year. The auditing line item, the final APA invoice was received. It's not reflected here, but it was about $20,000. So for the year-end, the auditing line item should be $235,000 total, which is about $65,000 under budget. All other personnel categories and line items have more than 25% capacity left, bringing the total personnel category to 28.3 million for the nine months ended with 26.94% left to spend. Overall, this is 7.47% higher than the prior year and is driven by the increase in the salaries and wages line item. The operational total is at 3.8 million with 43.35% of the budget left to spend. This is $528,000, or 16.10% higher than prior year. Computer software and equipment is 32.22% higher, $519,000 over prior year at this time, but it's still well under budget, and it should finish the year up under budget. The postage line item itself is 53.47% higher, which is $156,000 than prior year. It has also exceeded its annual budget for this year. And this is due to the paperless project, postcard postage, as well as overall increase in postage rates. Sheri, if I could have you go down to the near the bottom of page 22. It shows total expense prior to the reserve. It's at 32.1 or 32.2 million with 29.36% left to spend and is 8.43% or 2.5 million higher than the prior year. By end of year, we anticipate being under budget overall and not having to reach into the reserve amount. And that chart at the bottom shows the hybrid percentage breakout of these admin costs spread among the hybrid percentage for 2024. And then the next page shows the JP Morgan fees and hard dollar interest that's been earned by month. The first category are fees, and the second chart is the interest that's been earned as we've covered that. And I'll entertain any questions you have.
Any questions for Mike? Well, that change in the JP, in the hard interest earned continues to be positive for us and expect that in the future. And also your news that looks like will be under budget for the end of the year also sounds very good. So any, I don't think we have an action, do we?
We do not. I do want to make one comment on the fees. If you look in March, no, I'm sorry. In March, yeah, the fees, 12,024. Yeah, they're a little bit higher. State prints our checks for us, and their check printing machine went down. And so JP Morgan had to actually print checks for us. And that fee's built into their fee structure, so we had an increase in fees for that month. You'll see it also in April, but I wanted to point that out. There's a large increase that's under my attention when it was due to a check printing that had to happen.
Oh, by May, it's working, they get a check machines working?
It is working now, yes.
Yeah, I don't know how many checks they work, but that's a percentage-wise, a big increase. So statewide, they don't write a lot of checks. Okay, other questions? Statements? Thank you, Mike. And I think we've got Jwan. Jwan is on next.
Good morning. Today, we have five positions being requested for hazardous duty. The Department for Natural Resources is requesting their mine safety specialist series to be approved for hazardous as these positions do meet the statutory requirement of positions with duties that require frequent exposure to a high degree of danger or peril and also require a high degree of physical conditioning. Also, the Department of Parks is requesting the State Park Ranger 2 position to be approved for hazardous. The Department of Parks already has a State Park Ranger 1 position approved. This position does require Kentucky Peace Officer certification. Therefore, they do meet the requirement for hazardous duty. The department is asking for a retro effective date of February 1st, 2024, as they promoted several State Park Ranger 1 employees effective of this date to State Park Ranger 2. But they did not get all the required information in time for the last board meeting. Position questionnaires and job descriptions were included. Therefore, KPPA requests the Board of Trustees to approve these positions for hazardous duty.
Are there, is there anything in particular you want to point out that why they're being brought now rather than a long time ago?
No, the Department for Natural Resources just reached it out, reached out and said they discussed with the state budget director, and they feel that it's time to move these positions, you know, as mine safety is hazardous, and they feel it's time to do it. They had thought about doing it before, but just never provided the information, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions?
I'll do a motion to approve, Lynn.
Thank you, Keith. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 You need a second, Lynn.
I second it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, William. Thank you, Sheri. Okay, so I'm going to take that, let's do the vote again. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Okay, the next we have is amendment to 105 KAR 1-451, quasi-governmental employee reports on independent contractors and leased employees. And this is Jessica and Gillian?
Yes, hello. I'm going to present the amendment. And so amendments to this regulation were made to update the language throughout the regulation to be consistent with all of our KPPA and KRS regulations, as well as to clarify the reporting requirements and the exemptions. We also have added the contractor wizard. We've incorporated that into this regulation as a requirement, beginning with the fiscal year, which starts July 1st, 2025. And this wizard is an interactive electronic form that guides employers through reporting their independent contractors, leased employees, or other similar employment arrangements. Does anyone have any questions about this regulation?
Doesn't seem like it, Jessica. Continue?
Uh, no, that's what I have to present on it. We would just want to ask that the board approve us for filing this regulation with the Regulations Compiler's office.
And there is a lot of detail.
I'll do a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, William. Okay, all those in favor, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, number, number 11 on the agenda is a recommended change to the bylaws. And I'm going to talk about it and then ask the Investment Committee if they wouldn't mind adding. The last time we went over the actuarial report last year, it was a long meeting with a lot of detail, all this detail required, and to inform people of what's going on. We, well, after the meeting, I found that our actuarial committee had actually never met. And so I talked to a few people about it, Michael Blint Pruitt, that, you know, if we really want to go into deep depth on this, we probably should have the people on the board that are experts, say, in financial matters, which is the Investment Committee and the Actuarial Committee is a subcommittee of the actuary, of the Investment Committee. So I talked to Michael, and he said that there was some language in the CERS that actually discussed what the Actuarial Committee should do, and he incorporated that into this. There was one other thing that I'd like to add, and that is, I'd like to add that there is a requirement, or at least an annual meeting of the Actuarial Committee, to review the report of the actuaries and be able to come back to the KRS Board with a committee report. That would enable, to me, that will enable anybody that's really interested and wants to know more. The Investment Committee and the Actuarial Committee are online, and you can go and listen to it online. And I went back and did that, and I think that that's where the good questions are asked, questions that I wouldn't know to ask. And so what I would like to do is put, if we pass this motion, that the meeting of the Actuarial Committee precede be between the presentation of the Actuarial Report and the KRS meeting, so that they can make a presentation. So that's what my recommendation would be, and so I would like to see what everybody else has to say.
Ms. Hampton, if I may, the amendments to the bylaws that affect this start on page 120 of your board books, and they continue on to page, the top of page 121. And it, those amendments simply adjust the, the membership of the Actuarial Subcommittee to say that it has to be comprised of three members of the Investment Committee. The Chair of the Investment Committee appoints those three members with the concurrence of the KRS Board Chair as to each appointee. And that, that is the amendments that are currently there. And then, as Ms. Hampton stated, the top of page 121 states that the Actuarial Subcommittee will meet as necessary upon the call of the Chair of the Actuarial Subcommittee. I would amend that language based upon Ms. Hampton's suggestion to state that they must meet at least once a year and in between a certain time, as Ms. Hampton stated. So if this board moves to approve this amendment, it would be with what is currently drafted along with Ms. Hampton's stated amendment.
And Michael, I think now the Chair of the Investment Committee is also on the Actuarial Committee. Is that correct, Pruitt? Hard to tell since we haven't met.
I believe so.
So, Michael, can you also make that change? The Chair of the Investment Committee is on the Actuarial Committee?
We can make that change. Then it just becomes, if it's just going to be three members, then it just becomes two additional members. So we can, we can make that change pretty easily.
I think, I think it's a total of four, isn't it, including the Chair?
I think it's just three, isn't it?
Yeah, if I may, if I may, it looks like currently we have David Atkins, Ramsey Bova, and Pamela Thompson listed as the, the Actuarial Subcommittees.
So if we add the Chair, it would be four people.
Correct.
That make sense, Michael?
Yes, I can draft this however the board wants it to be. It doesn't make a difference to me if the board wants it to be four people. Then I can add four, and one of them is to be the Chair of the Investment Committee.
Yes.
Okay.
Pruitt, your comments?
Well, I think that's fine. You know, I don't, I mean, three to four, three or four either way is fine.
I mean, perhaps we don't mandate the number. Maybe it's, you know, mandated three, but it's optional to have more.
Minimum of three plus the Chair. That's a good idea, Pam.
Well, that would be four, yeah. I mean, we could say three, including the Chair, but there could be four.
And that makes some sense, because if we have to, to stay or have this meeting in between the receipt of the audit and the next KRS Board meeting, we, you know, we don't want to run into a problem with scheduling there.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Michael, have you got that?
I'm taking some notes, just want to make sure I get it all right.
Minimum, Pamela, that minimum of three, including the Chair?
Yeah, so I guess you'd say the Chair plus two others, but then the Chair has the option to have three others.
So the way it'll be drafted, this says that the Actuarial Subcommittee should be comprised of at least three members, one of which shall be the Chair of the Investment Committee. The other members shall be appointed by the Chair of the Investment Committee.
Yeah.
That gives the Chair the opportunity to appoint, to appoint at least two or up to as many as they choose, but they have to have at least three. They must meet at least once per year. And I want to make sure I'm clear on when that meeting needs to be, so that we get that correctly stated.
Before the KRS meeting that is going to address the Actuarial Report.
Okay.
Then we might ask the actuaries to make, actuaries to make sure they give the committee enough time to review it.
Okay. All right, I can get that in there. That's not a problem.
Okay, Ramsey, do you have anything to add?
No, that sounds good.
Okay. Then we have a motion. And the motion is a motion to approve the amendments to the bylaw as discussed. And is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please say no. Motion is adopted, and thank you all very much. Okay, next is the Investment Committee Report. This is Pruitt and Steve.
Well, as always, I'm going to, I have very little to say, so I'm going to turn it over to Steve to go through the usual information.
All right, thank you, Pruitt. The KRS Investment Committee held a regularly scheduled meeting on May 16th. No recommendations were made that required approval by the Investment Committee, and no actions were taken that required ratification by the KRS Board of Trustees. A couple of things to note from the report. Following the review of the Public Equity Portfolio Index Structure, KPPA Investment Staff notified the Investment Committee of the determination to change the Benchmark Index for the U.S. Public Equity Large Cap Internally Managed Passive Portfolio, it's a lot of words, from the S&amp;P 500 Index to the Russell 500 Index. And that's contingent on successful negotiation and execution of a license agreement with Russell. The Russell 500 Index provides better alignment across the U.S. Public Equity Portfolio and minimizes the potential for unintended tracking error due to variances in index construction methodology. As you may be aware, most of the other portfolios managed in the public equity overall portfolio allocation are managed against Russell indices, so it just provides better alignment. Additionally, it lowers cost by approximately $130,000 per year, with no performance or volatility impacts. The indices share over 430 names in common, which, or it's about 97% of the index weight. We would anticipate the transition would occur in the normal course of portfolio rebalancing. Would not have to engage a transition manager, and it would be done probably in one to two trades. Pause there for questions. If not, for the quarter, the portfolio was performed in line with expectations and their benchmarks. Pension composite produced a return of 3.54% for the quarter, with the KERS and SPRS portfolios returning 3.37% and 3.41%, respectively, while their benchmark returned 3.29%. The KRS hazardous pension portfolio returned 4.30%, while the insurance portfolios' returns range from 4.28% to 4.40% compared to the benchmark, which returned 4.37% for the quarter. As of the end of the quarter, performance fiscal year-to-date had been strong across all portfolios, with the pension composite producing a return of 8.53%, while the insurance composite returned 9.71%. Subsequent to the end of the quarter, as we saw markets pull back in April as signs of waning demand and sticky inflation called into question the soft landing narrative and jump-started the stagflation concerns. Expectations of a slower and shallower easing cycle drove assets down, even as defensive portfolios produced losses with yields rising across the maturity spectrum. Portfolio performance was recently released for April. Consistent with those softer markets, portfolios were down between 2, 2.0% and 2.35% for the month. In May, markets were able to recover some of April's losses. Both momentum did begin to fade toward the end of the month as bond yields reversed course on fading rate cut expectations, which generated valuation headwinds. Performance for May is still preliminary, but the portfolios are indicated up 2.5%, with preliminary fiscal year-to-date performance through the first 11 months up between 9% and 10% across portfolios. As of the end of the quarter, only one individual asset allocation class was not in compliance with the allowable IPS range, and that's compared to 14 individual asset classes not in compliance as of the end of December 2023. So we were able to make substantial progress during the quarter. And the only compliance item noted was the KERS pension cash allocation of 5.4% versus the IPS allowable maximum range of 5%. So a minimum, a minimal discrepancy between the allowable range and the actual amount of cash. And we do have, there's high frictional cash, transactional cash in that account as we have substantial contributions and distributions going out on a monthly basis. Similar to what Mike Lamb talked about with the administrative budgets, we provided an update on the investment budget and noted that as of the end of the quarter, only 41% of the amount budgeted for the fiscal year had been spent. We also highlighted that the systems have begun to realize the benefit of managing additional assets internally. We highlighted the $250,000 reduction in core fixed income management fees paid fiscal year-to-date, and that's despite the 25% increase in the market value of the overall core fixed income allocation. As we noted at the time of that initial transition to more internally managed assets, we anticipate savings of approximately $1.5 to $2 million per year for that asset class.
Steve, let me ask a question. I was asked this by another board member.
Sure.
We're doing the internally managed, we're doing bonds, fixed incomes, but I also understand we're also doing some index funds. Is that correct?
Yes, across asset classes. So we obviously have a significant internally managed public equity portfolio that Joe manages, and that's across three different distinct portfolios. One is the, the S&amp;P 5 moving to the Russell 5 passive. That's an index replication strategy. We have a mid-cap index replication strategy. And then we have the scientific beta portfolio, which is also internally managed. In addition, internal assets would include our liquidity program, core fixed income, and then we have a number of proxies that we're investing, and that's in real estate, private equity, and real return. Those, the intention of the proxy asset classes are, those are placeholders that we think have similar risk-return profiles as the overall asset class. And as we, as either committed capital is called, in the case of real return, we'll wind down the proxies as capital gets called, or as we source new investments in real estate or private equity, the proxy assets, the investments would be wound down.
Okay, thank you. I think I'm, I'm not here, but talk to Pruitt on maybe we need a report that shows how our, our investments are doing compared to their proxies or compared to the measurement, something like that, so that.
Absolutely, that is.
We do, we do that.
Yeah.
That's in our performance report.
It is included in the, in the Investment Committee material. We also noted, I didn't, didn't note here, but we also noted that for the quarter, all three of the proxy asset, the internal core, which is the new fixed income internally managed account, I think it was the second-best performer in the overall core portfolio. And all three of the proxy portfolios were positive contributors to outperformance relative to the benchmark. So they had a strong.
And I think maybe over time, we haven't been as clear about the, the three-stock index funds. Our staff is not choosing the stocks to go into those indexes. Our staff is following the actual index and using some, some outside sources in one, in these cases. But just to tell us you need this, this many shares of that stock, we do not pick the stocks. We're not, maybe been more fun if we had picked Nvidia about 18 months ago, but that's not what this is about. And so I, I don't know if there was some lack of clarity there, and I would apologize for that. But it is, just as if we were investing in the, in the, one of the S&amp;P index funds that an outside manager has, but we're doing it without paying a fee.
Steve, could you talk about implementing, though, it's not just pushing a button. So for the.
No doubt.
The, the U.S. Public Equity, the bulk of the internally managed assets are in that, that currently S&amp;P, soon to be hopefully Russell 500 Index. That's a full index replication strategy. So we own the individual stocks within that index, at index weight. We do rebalancings usually on a monthly basis, and then whenever the index itself rebalances. So there's a, a number of trades that need to be executed in order to rebalance that portfolio. But it is a full index replication, so we're not taking active risk. As intended, that's, that's part of, you know, the guidance we're provided in our investment policy statement is that is, we view that as a, as a low alpha asset class. We want to do minimize fees. We want to use our, our fee budgets where we think we can get the most bang for our buck. And in large cap growth, which is essentially what that S&amp;P 500 is, a full index replication, it essentially zero fees. We think is the, the most appropriate use of kind of our fee budget and our risk budget.
I think most of our board is aware of the, of the relatively ugly statistic that year-over-year, 80, 85% of the active managers out in the, in the, the world of investing, underperform the, the indexes. And so, you know, that's, we do have active management in specialty areas where we can add. We do believe there's, there's alpha or excess return to be gained. But in general, we, we are just trying to match the, the market at, which does very well over longer-term time periods. We're trying to match it with a, a low cost.
Yeah, we are continuously reviewing, especially in the. Yeah, we are continuously reviewing, especially in the, the public equity allocation and portfolio, we're continuously reviewing what the balance should be between active and passive, you know, and where it makes the most sense. To Pruitt's point, if we look at our, our small cap space, that's where we think, you know, paying for active management, which can be relatively expensive, it gets us, we're able to generate greater alpha in those asset classes. But we're, we're always reviewing what the correct balance is. We work with Wilshire in determining where the right balance is between passive and active and, and obviously the, the fees we pay for, for that active management.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Pruitt. Pruitt, would you mind talking at the investment committee about maybe some kind of a report that would go to the whole board that just kind of shows what we're doing internally? In talking, this was brought up to me by someone outside of this, and I mean, your board member.
Yes, I think, sure, we can do that. That, that's very reasonable and, you know, we, we throw these words of active and passive around fairly loosely sometimes, and I think we should, a little clarity would not hurt at all.
Yeah, Pruitt, I.
Thank you.
Pruitt, I think we can give you some data as to the practice of other, other public funds. So, you know, if we are 30% internally managed, how does it compare to other public funds?
That'd be great.
Any other questions for Steve or Pruitt?
Lynn, this is Mary. One question, is the $250,000 in savings in management fees, and that's, you know, that's certainly a meaningful number, does that take into account any expansion or any additional personnel cost to our own internal staff? Did we have to beef up to take on these responsibilities, or is it just an add-on to the existing staff responsibilities?
We have not added any additional staff. We have some positions that are open, not specifically in our fixed income, but we did not add any additional staff in order to bring those assets in-house.
So it's a real record, I mean, it's a real savings of 250,000 then?
Yeah, and that was 250 fiscal year-to-date. Remember, that transition occurred late or early in the fiscal year, middle of the fiscal year. So we anticipate just moving, you know, if we were to keep the allocations as they currently are, overall savings across pension and insurance trust of about 1.5 to 2 million per year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think you've mentioned a couple places today you've saved money, and Mike Lamb talked about the investments that we're doing internally now. Appreciate everybody's attention, not just on how much money we're earning, but how much money we're saving. Thank you all for that.
Yeah, Steve, Steve mentioned it's 250,000 less, and at the same time, we're running about 25%, 25% more money in the future. I think it's going to do a reconciliation, say, there's really more savings than that. That's, that's the pure fees savings right now.
I'm going to wait for the report. The part of that says we're not following the index, that we're being braver than the index, but I'm sure that we'll see it in the report. Any other questions? Okay, I think we have, Dr. Miller is not able to attend today unless she's been able to get on lately. So Connie, will you mind, please give the report of the Joint Retirement Health Committee plan?
Certainly, I will. Thank you. The committee met on May 8th and discussed, well, actually reviewed a presentation from Humana that included the planned performance for plan year 2022 versus 2023, the impacts to the 2025 renewal, the Inflation Reduction Act, and Medicare CMS final notice for 2025. And then they introduced Personify Health. If you go to the first paragraph under this, well, actually, it's the second paragraph there, the medical and pharmacy claims had an increase. Now you'll see the premium pharmacy plan had a 14.3% increase, the essential plan had a 4.1% increase. That's because that plan, if you remember, has a pharmacy benefit that is more member out-of-pocket. It is exactly like Medicare standard Part D benefit, so that's the reason for the pharmacy not going up quite so much. And the good news is participation increased in all of the health alerts, preventive screenings, and silver sneakers engagement, which is actually rather well, really good to start with. The main thing to share in my mind with you is this, the renewal for 2025, there's two factors impacting it, the IRA for, that's the Part D benefit, the drug benefit. It's going to cap the cost of the members out-of-pocket at 2,000 versus the $8,000 it currently is. So the money is more than likely, some of that's going to impact the premium we currently have, which would be an increase. And again, the Medicare is giving the actual bid for the final notice, and it's coming in with, you know, a reduction slightly in reimbursement, which is also going to impact, in my opinion, and others nationally. The adjustment will be there too for an increase. And Humana does have a rate cap in the contract that we have with the, you know, state of Kentucky and the retirement system with Humana, but it does have language in the contract about exceeding these Medicare regulations, federal regulations. So we'll have to look at all of that during the renewal. Larry Lowe and Tracy Garrison and Carla Whaley are on the call. Can you, Larry, go over maybe a little bit of that, just to make it a little clearer, especially that smoothing? That's a new thing that's taking place in 2025 that has somewhat of a challenge, but it's regarding copays and so forth with, at the point-of-sale benefit.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
I can.
Yes, we can.
So as Connie stated, there are really two, two big topics that we're facing for 2025. The Inflation Reduction Act, as Connie mentioned, improves the Part D drug benefit for your retirees. So it, it also changes some of the cost share between the plan, the manufacturers, and CMS. So the good news for your members is that their financial out-of-pocket costs are going to be capped at a much lower level for 2025. In some cases, you'll have members pay only one copayment for the year. Let's say they have a very high-cost specialty medication. It's possible that they will pay their, a single copayment, much less than the $2,000 stealing, and that will be the, the end of their financial out-of-pocket costs for the remainder of the year. So it's, it's providing a much better benefit for your membership, but it, the, there's going to be a, a cost for that that was not accounted for when that law was passed. So we'll be talking with Connie and the team about that once we deliver the renewal later this week. The, the, what they call move smoothing, so it's the maximum out-of-pocket smoothing is what Connie was referring to. So that is a program that's voluntary for the members that allows them to, to not pay any copayments at the time, at the point-of-sale. So at the pharmacy counter, if they opt into this, they would not pay any copayments, and they would be able to spread that cost over 12 months. So that again is a benefit for the members. There'll be much more to. They'll get, they'll basically get a bill every month from a, from a vendor that we're working with to administer that. The other topic, as Connie mentioned, is the CMS rate notice that was finalized in April, really is providing some significant headwinds for the whole industry and from, from the standpoint of the, the reimbursement that we get from CMS to administer these plans. So that, that will provide additional financial challenges as we head into 2025 as well. So good news again, your membership is going to, you know, see an improved benefit overall on the IRA side of things, but the, the financial challenges will be there for, for us and, and the plan to, to manage through for '25.
Do we have any questions around that before I go to the last paragraph? I thought I'd pause for a minute. Yes, ma'am.
I think I heard there's going to be increased benefits and some costs. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Miss Eves has her hand raised?
Thanks, Sheri.
Oh, no. Okay, if no more questions, I'm going to go on. Personify Health was introduced at this committee meeting as well. They're going to, they're a subcontractor or vendor of Humana's that's going to take over the individual medical-only plan that we provide to our retirees. Now that's a plan that's a supplement to original Medicare. It has about 3,000 to 4,000 people enrolled in the plan, and it's an option for medical-only as it states, but it allows them to go to the VA and obtain drug benefits there with another Part D plan that maybe your spouse may have. So those retirees are interested in that benefit. We keep around that many in it, and I don't know, Humana, if you want to say anything about Personify Health, they have a, quite a number of years' experience in this field, and are they considered a TPA?
Hey Connie, it's Tracy. I'm happy to comment on that.
Tracy. Yep.
So yes, Personify Health is a TPA, and Humana has had an ongoing relationship with them. And as you may recall, Humana is in the process of exiting the commercial business for insurance, which prevents us from being able to administer the ASO plans, these medical-only and MIRA plan that you have. So we've been working closely with Personify Health, formerly known as Health Comp. They are a TPA, and we're working with them so that they will be administering the benefits on behalf of Humana for this subset of the KPPA membership.
I believe that's all we have to share, unless you have questions.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and I, you'll report back to Dr. Miller that all went well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have CER, CEO update, John. John, are you on mute? John Shelton? No, looks like he's trying to get off mute.
Looks like he's frozen to me.
Yeah.
I think, I think I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm on my phone because the internet went down in, in our neighborhood, so.
Oh, no.
Yeah, that happens in the urban areas as well as rural. Two things to mention at this point is there were multiple meetings, as you all know, about the budget, the budget working group that occurred over the last three months since the last meeting. Those were productive, and the results of that have been, already been reported. The other thing to mention is that Lynn and I met with Ed Owens and the Chair of the Committee, Lyle.
CER.
Pardon?
CERS.
Yeah, CERS Chair. And we had a good meeting, talked about many issues, and it looks like on a go-forward basis, we're going, we're going to have a, a good relationship. So no details to report at this point, but that meeting was a good one. So that's all I've got right now.
John, I'll add to your meet, to your report that we met in Greenburg, Kentucky, which is not named after the mayor of Louisville, it's named from Green County, and I was totally amazed with the, this small town and everything they have, including a museum, that I, if you're, if you're looking for something to do in an afternoon, go into Greenburg and seeing this museum, which has a display from a World's Fair, I think in like, I think it was in St. Louis in 1896, something like that. It was, it was really interesting. And the day before we were there, the Kentucky Motorcycle Association had been at a event in town. So it was, it was really quite an interesting town. So again, you got a Saturday, you want to go drive somewhere, I would recommend it. So thank you, John.
Okay.
Okay. Next, we have the KPPA update, and on the update, I would like to read to you all, and I want to, Dave Atkins is not here on this, but I want, also want to mention, and thanks, Dave Atkins for his input in getting this done, but we have a resolution that I'd like to read. It is on page, Sheri, what, page 130 of the book, and it is, "Resolution Acknowledging the Contributions of Dave, David Eager to the Kentucky Retirement System and the Kentucky Public Pension Authority." Whereas Dave, I'm going to say Dave, Dave Eager was named interim executive director of the then Kentucky Retirement System, now the Kentucky Public Pension Authority in August 2016, and where Mr. Eager was named executive director of KRS, now KPPA, in April 2018. And whereas KPPA operates the Kentucky Employees Retirement System, the county's employment retirement system, the state police retirement system, which together comprise some 421,000 current and former state and local government employees and the state police. And whereas at the end of fiscal 2018, and this is where especially new people can take a breath, as the end of 2018, the KERS non-hazardous pension plan was 12.9% funded, and the SPRS pension reached a low of 27% funded in the 27, 2017 and 20, again in 2019. And whereas, six years later, as of June 30th, 24, 2024, both KERS non-hazardous pension and SPRS pension plans' funding levels have nearly doubled. And whereas, much of the credit for the increase of the funded status of KERS non-hazardous and SPRS is due to the work of Mr. Eager and the KPPA staff have done in building relationships and trust with legislatures and in educating them on pension funding issues. And whereas, that work has resulted in the legislature not only allocating the full actuarial recommended contribution each year, but also additional appropriations to pay down KERS non-hazardous and SPRS pension liability totaling 1.4 billion for the two systems. And whereas, employee surveys show morale at KPPA has improved under Mr. Eager's leadership due largely part to better communication. Now therefore, may it be resolved that the Kentucky Retirement System Board of Trustees commends and thanks Dave Eager for nearly eight years leading the former KRS, now KPPA, and wishes him all the best in well-deserved retirement. And with that, I'm going to add a comment of my own. Since I've been on the board, I have learned to depend on Dave's wisdom. He, and when he disagrees with me, he happily disagrees me and explains why he's disagreeing with me, and I have learned an amazing amount of how the organization works from Dave. And I personally thank you for everything, and I'd like to open this up to anybody else, any of the other trustees who'd like to make a statement, and John.
And Lynn, you should say, "You're in on the motion, Pat."
Well, of course, I have to get a motion, but.
Well, I can, I have been on the board over six years and most, not quite covering Mr. Eager's, but I was very aware as part of the investment community of the mess. I'm trying to use nice language prior to his arrival, and it's, we've, we've come a long way in, in many areas, and one of which is that the Public Pensions Authority Board was operating in the dark and operating with misin. and operating with misinformation previously. And they, I don't think they even had that name, but there was a group. And now they're, they're, it's a very effective board. And I think that Mr. Eager gives, should get a lot of credit for making it effective and a real fiduciary for the systems across every system.
Yeah, Lynn, I will add that I've been on the board over nine years now, and I noticed an almost instant change in culture when Dave took over for the better. And obviously, in, in, in the time that he's been in charge, we've, we've dug out of a massive hole. We're still in a hole in some ways, but we're in, we're not in nearly the hole we were. And a lot of that is due to the relationship that Dave cultivated with the legislature and, and the trust that really he gained with them. So I'll be forever grateful to Dave as a retiree and wish him nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Now, I, I just want to echo Pruitt and Keith. I'm fairly new, but before I joined this board, I talked to my dad who was on this board before. And I just think from, from what I hear, Dave, he just brought credibility. He brought people having more respect and people really being able to trust what was, was going on here. And, you know, my thing is, I think that that is something that not only the board members, you know, are, are really thankful for in that, but that just the, 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 all the, all the people that are being paid these pensions. I mean, that, I, I think that, that is just a very, everybody throughout the Commonwealth of Kentucky is grateful for the kind of stability that you provided so this organization could, you know, move forward. And like I said, there's still maybe, as you look, there's still things that we have to accomplish. But your leadership definitely got it in a better direction than when you started.
Thank you, Ryan. I appreciate that.
Lynn, I would like to add, I'm a fairly new board member. However, I knew of Dave Eager by reputation from prior work in the pension field. And he was always applauded as a great leader and very experienced and very wise. And I have found that by reputation, his actions exceed his reputation. You know, sometimes that's not always the case. And so I congratulate Dave on continuing to perform in a way that is so admirable and so helpful and is a great contribution to the Commonwealth.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Lynn, I was on a trustee at the, about the time that Dave became interim Executive Director. And during that entire time, I think the operations and the mood of everybody at KRS and KPPA has improved a lot. He's gained respect from everybody, including the employees and also including the trustees. And maybe most especially the legislators. So, gosh, it's been a good, good eight years.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, everybody. Ryan, you know, before we ever knew you, we heard this statement that you had made that used to be, I'll start it if you would like to finish it. It used to be the first thing the rating agency asked you was about the pensions. Do you remember that statement?
I do very well.
Love for you to, to add that to this conversation.
Yeah, so I always told everybody when I was in OFM, I loved 98%, 95% of my job. And that percent that wasn't the portion that I loved was early on, those conversations with rating agencies. And the state collectively spends lots of money on rating agencies, independent assessment and experts in, in public finance. And it was, it was even investors too. So when I have meetings with rating agencies, meetings with investors, maybe 10 questions spanning an hour. And, you know, the, when I started, first five, six, seven questions were all on pensions, and rightfully so. It was a big credit impact. It was difficult. I mean, they really, they knew their stuff and they really shined a light on those issues. And OFM's kind of the, the champion of, of those conversations. It's different. I had a conversation last week with, with Fitch and the previous week with S&amp;P. Completely different. They ask about Blue Oval, they ask about batteries. And pensions are still there. And I already have some meetings when Fitch comes into town, but they're going to go look at Blue Oval. So economic development has moved up in the questions. And so some of the, some of the recognition that's in this resolution, I think, in rating agencies and investors notice.
Thank you very much. Dave, we're going to miss you. Thank you for staying on and, and passing as much knowledge as you can in this month to Ryan. And we'll miss you and hope you'll come to visit. And with that, I'd like to have a motion, unless anybody else has something to say? I'd like a motion to approve the resolution that we just read, and you don't want me to read again?
I move to approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mary. Second?
Second.
Can we have a second and a third? So that sounds good. We probably have about seven seconds, five seconds. Okay, the, the motion has been made. We have any further discussion? If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion passes. So thank you again. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
The next thing, I'm sorry?
If I can make a comment briefly?
Of course.
There are three words in that resolution that are critical, and it is "and the staff." I don't know, you can go back, you don't need to go back and find it, but it talks, you know, thanks, Mr. Eager, for the work he's, he and the staff have done. We emphasize that all the time, and it'll continue. I feel, you're right, I sense Ryan's in the same boat, and that is, we, we use analogies. Most recently, an orchestra. I mean, an orchestra is comprised of a lot of people. And we talk about even the second violin and the third violin, you need them. And everybody plays a role. If you went around this table and talked to each of the people individually, I'm not suggesting you do that, but they can all point to something they've done, whether it's with the legislature or in regulations or whatever it might be. They've done something to enhance the organization. So it's gotten better, thanks to a whole lot of people, I mean, 250 people here. And that, I'm convinced that sense will continue on into the future that everybody feels they add value here. Thank you, and thanks to all the other 249 people.
Thank, thank you, Dave. And I am going to also thank that this is not a sports coach moving to another team and taking the rest, taking your other, other managers with you. You're, you're leaving the managers here.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Private sector, or not another agency either.
Okay, so the, the motion has passed, and we now have a mo, we need to, I'm going to make a motion to move into closed session. And a motion will be enter into closed session pursuant to KRS 61.810C to discuss pending litigation. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved.
So moved.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion is adopted. And Sean, can you take us offline?
This statement, you want me to read it?
Uh, sure, or I can. A motion had been made in open session to move into closed session for a specific purpose. And such motion having been carried by a majority of vote in open public session, the committee shall now enter closed session to discuss pending litigation pursuant to KRS 61.810C. Thanks, Michael, for pointing that out.